Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November 5th, 2025 Hyde Park Planning Board Meeting. If you would please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for key construction office and storage units. They are looking for an extension to start construction. May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Again, this is just, basically, they finally got their information from the DEC, and now they can start figuring out the construction portion of this, so they've asked for their two-year extension. Just gonna go quick. Tad, any comments?
No, no comments.
Victoria?
No comments.
Mr. Tuttle, sorry.
No comments.
Mr. Waters?
No comments.
This wasn't.
Neither.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Ms. Lee?
No comment.
Mr. Gersio?
No comment.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to this application? There being none, may I please get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we will, we have a resolution to...
I've got this one. Resolution to grant a second extension of time to commence and complete construction key construction warehouse storage units, November 5th, 2025, Resolution 2020-30G. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the applicant a one-year extension of the time to start substantial construction of the project to November 28th, 2026, and a two-year extension of time to complete construction of the project to November 28th, 2028.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Mallon subdivision and site plan. Tonight, we will be opening a public hearing for the subdivision portion but not for the site plan. Did the applicant come for that? No. Oh, there you are, sorry. Come on down.
We're gonna have to add a condition.
Just a quick overview.
All right, so as was discussed in the previous meeting, essentially, we have a 19.62 acre area of land consisting of two parcels. They would like to break it up into three lots, one being vacant, 3.7 acres, a larger farm quote-unquote parcel over 14 acres, and the last one would be the house on the corner of Forest and North Quaker with about one and a half acres of land. That's about it.
Okay. May I please get a motion to open the public hearing for the Mallon subdivision?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Moss, any comments on this?
No, I submitted my comments, and I believe they are in the resolution.
But I think, I heard you just had another comment, perhaps?
I did, I thought he was gonna cover it, because he knows the language.
All right, yeah, we can do that.
But you did recommend that we do a waiver of public hearing later.
One for a public hearing for the site plan.
Yep.
It already has a site plan, they're just changing the location of where the horses are and the other animals, and it's large enough to accommodate the animals that they have, so I didn't see a need to have a public hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Franson, any comments?
No, we don't. We had two comments initially, and they had been addressed.
Thank you.
And they were actually more engineering, which we followed up on, so we're good.
Mr. Sotero.
One thing. Tad had brought up about deeds for the new lots, that we normally do like to see them with the meets and bounds, with, and then what we do, like Brendan, is we have you submit like a letter with them with the meets and bounds, and then your map closures that basically show that, you know, it closes.
Yep.
So, but now...
Is that on the resolution?
Now, do we need the actual deed that he's gonna file?
Yeah, so we can do a planning board deeds for new lots along with a certification from the surveyor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that need to be a condition?
Yeah.
I'm adding it.
She's adding it.
Okay, so you're looking for the actual deed?
So, they're gonna wanna actually see the legal language, because in this one, there's a lot line revision. You have to...
Yeah, no, yeah, convenience and all that, okay.
Am I mending my portion?
No, she's working on the amendment. Okay. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Pollard?
Um, no.
Anything else, Mr. Sotero?
No, I signed off on the, they submitted a report from, that had the Dutchess County soils information on it for, you know, the new lot, because as you know, we want to make sure that they can get a well and a septic, it's like 3.7 acres, and the soils there are excellent, so I wrote a letter that says, you know, it's fine.
Excellent.
Yeah, we're good. Yep.
All right. Mr. Tuttle, any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Waters?
No comments.
Ms. Wasser?
No comment.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Lee?
No comments.
Mr. Gersio?
No comments.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this application? There being none, may I please get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I also get a motion to waive the public hearing for this site plan amendment that's reducing the animal husband reuse per the zoning administrator's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. How are we doing on the modified resolution?
Good. So I added a condition three.
Hold on a minute.
Yeah, we can just go through, and I'll read, I'll fill it in, the reader gets to...
When the reader, when I get there?
Okay, good, that's a deal.
All right.
Yep, go ahead.
Are you ready? All right. Resolution to adopt a secret determination of significance, grant final plat approval and amended site plan approval, Mallon subdivision. Resolution 2025-46A, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board finds that a proper case exists for requiring parks and playgrounds to be suitably located on the plat, and that a park of adequate size cannot be located on the site, and the applicant shall be required to pay a fee for each new lot as set forth on town's fee schedule to be deposited into the town recreation fund. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves the final plat and authorizes the chair or her authorized designee to sign the final plat after compliance with the following conditions: One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, payment of $5,000 in recreation fees into town recreation fund.
Three, approval by the attorney to the planning board of deeds for the new lots, including the land transfer, with a certification from the surveyor that the meets and bounds descriptions close.
Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the amended site plan and authorizes the chair or her authorized designee to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions: Payment of all fees and escrows.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries, and I really liked how that worked. That is a formula that we can use...
Over and over.
So you're gonna need a different piece of paper here.
That's all right, that's okay.
But I signed it anyway.
Might as well, right?
Oh, who's second? I didn't write it down there, sorry.
That was, Ms. Lee.
Second.
There you go.
Second, second.
Second, second. All right. Yep.
So did we just handle the site plan portion of the agenda?
We did.
Right.
You are...
Am I done?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. This is for the Thompson subdivision. This is on Richard Road in Hyde Park. We are, we've been working through some issues, but I believe that we have found solutions to all the issues. Would you agree?
I think so.
Okay, well, that's good. Now, just hopefully, you won't get yelled at anymore. May I get a motion to please open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Would you care to give us a quick update on all these avenues?
I think we're, there was 10 items, I believe, that were sent to us last week. Seven of them, I believe, are gonna be taken care of this week via call tiers. The town attorney's handling one. I personally spoke to Pete yesterday about one. And the only question I have is, you mentioned monuments, and now I see it says rods here at the property corners, so...
Is that okay?
That's okay with me.
All right.
I think the gentleman at the bottom of the hill is not gonna be happy, because we'll be putting one in the middle of his driveway.
Yeah.
So...
Well, we can pick a couple conspicuous spots that...
So, I had it...
We don't wanna, we don't...
We had it staked out the corners, and then I had them nicely put, just paint marks, dots on the driveways, because we were trying to figure something out, and he scrubbed them all off, so...
Are you in his driveway? The prop...
The lower property with the drainage complaint, yes, we own about half of their driveway.
Were we talking about that one, or the other side?
So, can I not put those pins in?
Where his mother's house is gonna go. We could put some over by where his mother's house is gonna go, right?
Yeah, do, can I do the, just the one lot versus doing the two? Because I think...
I don't know what...
Can you sink it in, so that it's at ground level, they would find it with a mag...
I just don't wanna put it in his driveway.
With a metal detector?
No, we don't wanna put it in his driveway. Tad and I, Tad and I will work with Matt. I'll come up with, we'll come up with it.
That's the only one I got.
Don't worry about it.
All right, okay.
We'll figure it out.
And everything else seem to...
Everything else is, yeah, everything else is doing right on.
Let's see, we'll work that out with Pete and Tad. Ms. Moss, any comments on this?
No.
Mr. Sotero?
No.
Nope, there's no...
Well, other, I mean, other than what we just said, no.
Okay. Because I know that there was, as we were working on a resolution, there were, wasn't there one item?
Yeah, it was just as far as, I think it was 11 had about, you know, a potential like easement, so on Matt's property that fronts on Richard, the filed map, or the, you know, the map shows an easement, a drainage easement on either side of Matt's property that drains the swale, and then, so, you know, we brought up about, if that is indeed a file like easement, then we're gonna ask Matt to give us an easement over his property that would make it continuous. However, I don't think, and that's what, it should be in Matt's like title report, or, you know, the surveyor should know this, but I believe that all of the easements that were on people's properties were never accepted by the town board way back in the '70s, when the subdivision was offered, like for dedication, like the roads, and the reason that, like, I know that is because over the years, we've been dealing with drainage issues in swales that are off, you know, the road behind people's properties, that it does show on the filed map a drainage easement, but we found out when one of the previous town attorneys researched it, that the drainage easements were never accepted by the town board at that time, because they figured that in, you know, the future, it was gonna be a major maintenance headache for, you know, the town, so they accepted, you know, the roads, but never accepted, you know, the drainage easements. So, if that's the case, so if the easements that are shown on Matt's map were just taken off the filed map, they may not actually be filed like easements. Was that like confusing, or what?
I understood it.
Okay.
No, so...
I mean, I can go over it again.
No, but, so, what have we request, so do we know if...
Well, they're gonna go check, I mean, Matt's...
That's one of the conditions?
Need to check in your title report?
We did, we couldn't find it in the title report, it just refers to a map number, and I believe we're reaching out to the county to figure that out.
All right.
So is that captured in the conditions?
So, right now, we have a condition proposed, which says, which would require a stormwater easement over the lot if the highway superintendent requires it in writing on copy to you and within 30 days of this resolution. So we're giving the town 30 days to figure out if they want a formal easement for stormwater or not, but the fact that they might not have one now doesn't mean they don't want one now, because there's no problem there, right?
Well, but it wouldn't make...
Does that allow access, so that you can...
Yeah, so they could clean it.
The problem is, they'd only have it in this one section in the middle, so it's like...
But isn't that better than nothing?
Well, it's kind of pointless, because you gotta clean it out from the bottom.
Well, there's a pipe under your driveway, too.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And then, so we would have to maintain, we, I mean, if we had, if we had the whole easement where there was a swale, and then when Matt put his driveway in, he put like a pipe under it, and then there's more of a swale behind the DeCarlos property, so I mean, if we had like all that, that's fine, but to just get one little piece of an easement in like the middle of something, it really doesn't...
But isn't that where you would start?
Easement to nowhere.
An easement to nowhere, but what, but isn't that where you would start, because...
No, because it starts, it starts, it starts way upstream Matt's property.
So, but, okay.
Look, if the planning board wants it, we'll get it.
No, no, I think it's whether the town needs it.
I foresee an issue with it, because if there's a problem that arises on Matt's property, and there's an easement, the town will have to take care of it, but the problem won't be at Matt's property.
Right, it's gonna be somewhere else.
It'll be somewhere else, so, but then...
We could have the right, but not the responsibility, so that if there is a reason for the town to go in, the town can do it, but the town won't have the responsibility to maintain it. I mean, there's different ways to get at this.
Okay.
So does that, so can, so condition 11, does that cover that?
I mean, because if we find out that there's, well, or, 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 I will talk to Howie, if there's not filed easements on either side of Matt, and he decides that yes, having an easement just in the middle is worth it, he can ask for it.
And that's 11, that's condition 11.
And that gives, and that gives him, you know, the right to do it.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna make any response, we don't wanna put a new responsibility on Matt that he doesn't have, I mean, he has to maintain it now, because it's his property.
Right, right.
But we won't, this wouldn't change that.
I think that we're good.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
All right, I just, you know, sometimes we get the opportunity to, I don't wanna say right a previous wrong, but, you know, we get a chance to maybe make something a little bit easier to handle down the road, so...
Okay.
That's why we bother to look at all of these things. All right, well, that, I mean, that sounds fine by me, but we can all weigh in, of course. Any other comments on this?
So, I mean, there are several conditions.
Yep.
Most of them have to do with requirements of the town board, because they proposed to abandon the roadway.
Yep. And this is what resolved the issue of access to your, to the new parcel?
Mm-hmm.
And the old parcel, I think.
So we just incorporated the town's conditions into this, so...
That's fair. That's fair. Okay. Mr. Dillon, any comments?
No, thanks to everybody for...
Yeah.
A lot of work on this one.
I wasn't sure how this was gonna be resolved.
A lot of work.
No comments here.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Just looking at the resolution, seven, is that Victoria? That's the revision of the final plat to include the installation of iron rods at the corners of each lot?
Oh, so does that need to be updated?
Does that need to be updated, so we're not doing something with that driveway?
With the driveway.
Do you wanna say, we could add to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator? So she has a little bit... And town engineer, sure.
To the satisfaction?
Of the zoning administrator and town engineer.
You could move his driveway.
But I...
I'm sure that would be easy.
Pete can go talk something about that.
Yeah, I'll do that. Hey, no problem, we're buddies. From way back. It was it?
Nice catch, Rob. Did you have the language that you need?
Yeah, and, or town engineer.
And town.
And, and.
And, I'm sorry.
We're all just trying to throw it on.
It's okay.
And it wasn't or.
Oh, execution. Execution tricks.
Anything else, Mr. Waters?
No, that was it, thank you.
Excellent catch, thank you. Ms. Wasser?
No comments.
Okay, Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Lee?
No comments.
Mr. Gersio?
No comments.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to this application? There being none, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
And we do have a modified resolution at the deas, and...
Yep.
Mr. Waters?
I have that. Resolution to adopt a secret determination of significance conditional final plat approval, Resolution 2025-36A, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that the draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board finds that a proper case exits for requiring parks and playgrounds to be suitably located on the plat, and that a park of adequate size cannot be located on the site, and the applicant shall be required to pay for the fee for each of the new lot as set forth in the town fee schedule to be deposited into the town recreation fund. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves the final plat and authorizes the chair or her authorized designee to sign the final plat after compliance with the following conditions: One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, payment of $5,000 into the town recreation trust fund. Three, approval by the attorney to the town of a perpetual access easement over the proposed road slash private road to owners of each parcel adjacent to the proposed road slash private road, and proof of recordation of the same with the Dutchess County clerk. Four, approval by the attorney to the town of a road maintenance agreement obligating the property owner and its successors, the burdened owner, to maintain the proposed road private road, and be reasonable for the bare all costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving the proposed road slash private road, and proof of recordation of the same with the Dutchess County clerk. Approval by, five, approval by the attorney to the town of all required town of Hyde Park or any other municipality or public utility, any additional access easements that may be necessary to serve municipal or public purposes, and proof of recordation of the same with the Dutchess County clerk. Six, revision of the final plat to include Dutchess County Department of Health signature box. Seven, revision of the final plat to include the installation of iron rods at the corners of each lot and installation of said iron rods, to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator and town engineer. Eight, revision of the final plat to include a graphic scale on each page. Revision of the final plat to correct the subdivision density table to include the correct beginning acreage of 7.98 acres for the original lot. Ten, revision of the final plat to include the reference to be recorded easements and maintenance agreement. Eleven, approval by the attorney to the town of a stormwater easement over proposed lot one, and proof of recording same with the Dutchess County clerk if required by the town highway superdepartment superintendent in writing on copy to the planning board chairperson within 30 days of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Do you have any other subdivisions, is that what you wanted?
There are no more public hearings, we are now going into workshop. The next item on the agenda is the Havilland Mobile Home Park Lot merger and the Havilland Mobile Home Park Site Plan. Welcome back.
Thank you. I can pull it on.
Yeah, if you listen on this side, maybe you'd be better at the computer. Good evening, everybody. I'm Jason Pitten-Garrow from Pitten-Garrow &amp; Doach. This is Lena Lee from Pitten-Garrow &amp; Doach. We're here representing...
Could you speak in, could you speak, can't hear you.
Oh, sorry about that.
Ah, there you go.
There we go. So Jason Pitten-Garrow and Lena Lee from Pitten-Garrow &amp; Doach, we're here representing Havilland Mobile Home Park tonight. There's two matters for consideration. I don't know if we want to go through them concurrently, or maybe separately is easier, but the first matter is the subdivision, or reverse subdivision, the lot consolidation of the park, multiple lots, and as part of the construction of the water system that Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority has asked us to do, which is basically complete at this point, we've done final inspections there, things are running pretty well, but they asked us to consolidate the lot, so we went ahead with the county and did that, and we need to go ahead and complete that process here with the town as well. So, there were some comments from the zoning board administrator that we have received and reviewed. Basically, the majority of the comments just indicate that they, that we need to finalize the plat in accordance with the requirements for filing, and we understand that, and we will go ahead and do that.
Excellent.
And, love, there's other comments that the board or their consultants would like to go through, or the administrator?
Sure, yeah, we can, we'll go through the, the merger, the lot merger first. Ms. Moss, can we get her a microphone?
Sure.
Sorry, get that woman a microphone.
Here you go. My guess is, is that Pete's gonna want the consolidated deed and the certification by the surveyor, right, Pete?
Yep.
Okay. That's my only other one. I, you got it? All right. Let's see. No, most of my comments are with respect to the site plan.
Ms. Franson?
With regard to the lot merger, that's pretty straightforward, most of our comments are regarding the site plan, yeah. To the extent that there might be some note issues on the site plan, I would just ask that you'll take a look at them.
Sure.
Not working.
Thanks.
Aw, there you go.
Okay, so, I wrote a letter October 29th, which, I assume you got a copy of it, right? So, on the site plan set, just make sure that the wetland boundary line is the actual one that's on the DEC wetland validation map, and label it as such, that's based on the validation map, and, you know, the date, date of the map. On the subdivision set, the way that the sheets are arranged now, I don't think you can file them in the clerk's office, because you've got the subdivision, subdivision plat, which is labeled site plan, which will have to be changed, that, I mean, if you're gonna file, if you're gonna file the whole like set, that's like one thing, I mean, all four like drawings, but if you're just gonna file the actual plat itself, they won't, they won't take a plat that says drawing three of like four, so...
As an individual sheet.[1791.41]
As an individual sheet.
Yeah. So you're going to have to check with them and see what they'll accept. The other thing is, you know, the surveyor's got to sign the map, you know, you as like a P E.
Yeah. So we'll defer to the surveyor as to how he wants to present the sheets and whether he wants to do one or make them all.
Yeah.
A set and we'll provide that to this board before we file.
Yeah, it's fine. So it's just some cleanup work. And the other thing is, you know, the clerk's office won't accept like an ortho, like image.
Underneath, sure.
So just, you know, some cleanup stuff. It's no big deal. So. And then we also had the same comment about, you know, the wetland like boundary. That, that also goes along with the lot line alteration set. Same thing as the prior application. Typically, we have like monuments that are shown, you know, on certain like corners. This one's kind of like a tough one because there's a lot of corners that are in the wetland boundary. So why don't we just work with the applicant about, like we thought, talking to the zoning administrator, we thought there could be one that could be installed at the point, point of beginning, which is up in the front along Haviland Road. And then maybe we can pick like one or two other, like spots. So maybe we just have a discussion on that with you.
Yeah. So maybe we'll have the surveyor propose a series.
Yeah, propose, propose a couple. So Ted, so Ted, one of the things that you, you had mentioned to me was that one long property line along the southerly like boundary that you thought that one might be good along there because there's some encroachments there and stuff. But I don't know, and I don't know that this is true, but I don't know that you can put like a monument that's not on an actual corner. In other words, it's one long, it's like a 12.
I thought, go all the way down to the end.
That's going to be.
That's going to be in the wetland.
That's going to be in the wetland boundary.
So I don't know. Can we pin the wetland boundary?
Well, maybe we'll talk to them. Maybe they can, maybe they can put some kind of a rod in that's a point on line.
A rod, yeah.
Along, along that long property line. So we'll talk to you about that.
Yeah, I think maybe a rod at that rear corner and then again, we'll defer to this. I mean, the monuments are generally so for future location.
Right.
So whatever the surveyor thinks is best for another surveyor to go out there and locate along the frontage, we could do that.
Why don't we do this? When you, when you get with him and talk to him about, you know, the filing and how the sheets are going to be, you know, arranged and stuff like that, why don't we have a call, you know, you know, the four of us with, with, you know, the surveyor and we'll go over the monuments and how you're going to like arrange the maps. So this way, when you resubmit, we're all like good. How's that?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep.
Ms. Polidaro?
Uh, no additional comments.
Okay. So I'm going to, I mean, we can go around, but we can go into the site plan and then you guys can consolidate your comments. So site plan.
Okay. I think a lot of those comments referred to some stuff on the site plan as well. Again, we have received the comments for the site plan and let me just grab the administrator's comments. The landscaping, the first comment, we'll add that. The remaining comments on this first page, we don't have any exception or take any exception to, we'll correct all those items. The comment that is discussing the fill in the floodplain or the wetland, the, if the pad is poured, it won't, it won't generate any fill in the floodplain because there'll be a pad that's poured and then the trailer or the home is usually skirted and it's raised above. So we won't, we won't upset or disturb or fill any area within the floodplain. But we have moved those out of the floodplain. So the unit actually won't be in the floodplain, but the comment was, will it cause any grading into the floodplain? And it won't because we'll be able to put the pad lower and then use the blocking to have the home at the proper height. So these comments aren't numbered, but that's about the seventh one down. The rest referred to some additional labeling. There was a question regarding the mailboxes. There, it's one common mailbox for all of the units or maybe two mailboxes to encompass all the units. There was a question about moving or modifying to the larger homes that are on the smaller of the lots. I would ask that we not be required to do that. It's, you're moving somebody's, you know, it's a home of somebody, so you're asking them to, to kind of move their home. So that's not really, if it's required, we would, I guess, do that, but it wouldn't be optimal in terms of the residents there. I understand the concern that, of course, in some way, a larger home got placed on what is one of, what ends up being some of the smaller of the lots within the, the now complete park. But again, moving somebody's home that may be occupied. If it's unoccupied, we may be able to do that, but my, my understanding is that it may be occupied.
So I was just concerned that if a home is replaced, you know, is it possible to reduce the size of one of the, I think there's only two or three lots that were of major concern.
Oh, so not while somebody's living in it?
No, but if they come in to do a replacement home, could it be reduced?
So I would, I suppose, I guess, if we could have a condition where one of the newer, and I'm not asking the board to do this because I know it's, maybe it's asking of much of the board or it's obviously at your discretion, but I think what was mentioned was, could we place the bigger home on some of the new lots or some of the bigger lots? So if we could have a, a condition in the resolution that says, you know, we are allowed to have two larger homes at some point and then where if those two homes are modified that Ted has referred to, they'll be replaced with smaller homes. I think we would be amenable to doing that.
Can you, just to be clear, can you show us on the map where we're talking about sort of where we can follow?
Sure. That's 33 and 21 on gen.
21 is this?
21 is this one?
33.
It's on top there.
They moved it.
That is the definition of what I chart. It's in the middle there.
Yeah. There's 27, 28, 24. I don't know if I see a 33.
You may have renumbered them after you took them, those two lots and moved them to the end of the other court.
Were they near each other or not?
Yeah, they should have been. I don't, I didn't renumber them, so I don't know. I think it only goes up to 29.
Could we deal with it with a note on the plan, Ted, that says if replaced?
We'll, we'll, we'll keep talking about it. Okay.
Yeah. So we'd be amenable to some kind of swap and removal of those larger units in the future and we'll clarify which ones they are.
Okay.
With the administrator and make notes on the plan that refer to them.
We'll work it through.
Yes.
33 and 29 gen, you said? Or 21 gen?
Yes, 21.
Yeah, 33 and 21.
Okay, so 33 is there. And then 21 gen.
Okay.
Yeah. So those are constricted, obviously. A lot of them are. So we, again, we'll, we'll work to accommodate that.
Okay.
And I think those are the majority that, we don't have any issue with the other comments on the, on the, from the zoning administrator regarding the site plan.
Okay. Not bad. Okay. Ted?
I don't know if it will work at this park. Some of the other parks have a typical lot that shows the two parking spaces and where the access points are. It's going to be hard. I mean, I don't mind doing that with individual permits that come in. I've got like 15 permits sitting on my desk for I don't know how long. And the distances to the other homes become standardized. I don't know if we can do that in this park, but it makes the building permit process go faster. The more detailed information we have, the faster they can be processed. And what else? I think, you know, I don't, if you would be amenable to identifying the lots that are going to need a certificate of elevation once the homes are placed. And if there are any lots that need the DEC permit, they said they needed a permit if there was not a pad, right? Is that, is that what I understood?
Yeah. So there would be those two that are within the buffer.
So there are two. Okay. So if we just identify those and flag them?
Yeah. So in that table where we have them all listed, you could do that. And we don't, we can provide a standard lot layout detail. It will, it will require some notes that say that it's restricted to the replacement of homes where the pad will be replaced because if the pads are already there, I think the least, the least amount of disturbance would be to just place the home back on the existing pad. But if, if for some reason like Ted is saying that we're going to replace a pad, we'll adhere to that new detail, that standardized detail. We don't, we have that detail from other parks and we'll provide it on this plan set, but with those notes or conditions that it applies to new pad placement.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that we always support, as you come more and more into conformance. It's sometimes.
Sure.
Or just uniformity. You're making it easier for everybody, yourselves as well as the town.
Yep. It's an, it's, you know, an ongoing effort here because this is, again, a number of parks being consolidated. I think one of the primary things was the consolidation of the water system. So that is maybe not a physical conformity, but there's, it allows some conformity in terms of water quality and consistency. So I think that's like a first step benefit. And so just as an update, we said that that's been completed. We, Lena has completed the wetlands delineation that was accepted and verified and we'll update that on the plans as well. And so, yeah, there, there have been some steps here to try to get it up to, let's call it up to current standard.
Yeah. You, you guys have made a, that's, that's a huge undertaking.
Yeah, they've made a big investment. They want to improve the park. That's the, the concept. But there, there are some limits as to what they can do when there are so many existing units that are occupied.
Yep. Okay.
The, the flower boxes that have been placed along the road are being moved closer into the, more into the property. There seems to still be a lot of discussion in the neighborhood about them. So.
Are they liked?
No. They're kind of a bright blue that doesn't seem to fit with.
Blue is not one of our colors.
But they were made.
They're more of an autumn.
They were made by the, they were made by the manager or somebody on site.
Okay.
So we might want to take a look at how they're being used and whether or not the face can be changed at all.
Okay.
Through the site plan process.
Are they painted or?
They're painted. Sky blue. At least the one I saw was sky blue. Are they all sky blue?
Yeah.
It's like your shirt, isn't it?
No, lighter than this.
Lighter than that.
Okay.
Pretty dark.
Oh, okay. There, there they are.
They're pretty dark.
Yeah.
And they're big.
Yeah.
They're quite large.
They have flowers in them now, but I think.
What's the concern?
So you're, so you're looking to color? And, and also that they're too close to the road or?
Right now, they're in the road right of way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they're within the setback and we will move them further into the property if they're, I, I suppose if they're moved further into the property, there may be less objection to the color, but if there is some preference on the color, I'm sure we can work with the owner to accommodate.
Well, what's a shame is the former chairperson's favorite color was blue.
So we'd be pleased to leave them, but if, if, again, if it disturbs the board, we'll, we'll change the color.
Yes. Ultimately, we'll have a public hearing.
And then we'll find out what the color.
Ask them, ask them, tell us.
Yes, how, how objectionable it is. Sure.
Or just what color they like.
Okay. Well, hopefully there's not that many people because there's quite a few colors and we'll have, getting to consensus may prove difficult, but we could see.
The board has a say too.
Okay.
But on the map, can you show where you're putting them? You have them on there, right?
Yes.
The new locations?
We had showed them to be proposed to be moved within the setback. So there's one that's here right now.
Mm-hmm.
And then we proposed to move that here behind the setback line.
Oh, okay.
Another one that's here, move that here. Another one here to be moved back here. They're basically at every road entrance. And then one here, we move back here. And then the last one here.
The second one you pointed out looked like it was right in somebody's front yard, but yeah, the other one's all replacement.
Yeah.
It's another person with young eyes. Another person with young eyes. And I don't, I don't know. Is this something that the, that the park, does the park have design standards or anything like that that, that they would?
Their own, I think each of the parks are somewhat individualized. So we can talk to them about if there's something that they want to present as a overall design aesthetic and carry that through the park.
Yeah, because it may not just be these flower boxes, right? I mean.
Yeah. If they're doing other things within signage or stuff like that.
Yeah. More uniformity works. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, good. Ms. Franson?
So we did prepare a memo. I'm just going to give some highlights. One is with regard to the wetlands, you did submit the PEC validated boundary map. So it looks like the lot line or the merger did reflect the new boundary, but I think the three and four on the site plan need to be updated.
Yeah, I noted that comment and we've changed that since.
Great. But the bigger question is you have the two mobile homes being relocated and I think it's within the 100-foot adjacent area. And you're also, I believe, proposing to extend the road to be able to capture, you know, and give access to those two mobile home parks. So I'm just raising the question. I think you might need to go to DEC to see whether or not you need a permit from them. I don't know that you do or you don't. It's just you are in the adjacent area.
Yeah. So that, that was discussed with them and we believe that we will need a permit, but we're going to comply with whatever, obviously, state regulations are prevail.
Okay.
And which, which two units? Is that Bonnie just?
They're the two relocated ones, the two new ones.
Originally, they were 19 gen and.
11? Yeah. And so, and then there was a general question about, there was a density provided for the mobile homes. And my question was, should the density include existing non-mobile home dwellings that are part of the mobile home park? And then we kept counting the mobile homes. We were coming up with 73, but there's a note that says there's 72. So just want to make sure, whatever it is, that it's, you know.
Yeah. So there's none proposed. Whatever it is, we'll make sure that it's consistent with what's.
Looking, looking at your chart and doing calculations, I kept coming up with 73. So just check because I think you had some map notes to the fact that there's 72.
Okay.
There's a requirement, and again, I think it's a little unclear to me, and it may have been a little unclear to you, what applies and what doesn't apply because you're pre-existing non-conforming, but you're moving things around. So we just noted that when you draw the lot lines, there's regulations that say they're supposed to be equidistant from two adjacent manufactured homes unless a parking apron accessory structure or the circumstances require a location of adjacent lot line at a different location. So you had put in the lot lines, I would just direct your attention to that provision in the event that they're not quite. in the event that they're not quite meeting that requirement. We talked about the wetland boundary. Minor comment, but you have the AE flood elevation at 228 feet when you're showing the flood plain. But there's actually a second elevation, I think, down by Andrea Court. And I'm not sure if you captured that. It's like 227.5. So you have the 228, but I'm not sure that you captured the, the other one that's down by Andrea Court, because it does change. So if you just take a look at that. We talked about the 72 versus the 73. And then in general, I think on the plans where it says frame houses, where you have the houses, I would just indicate whether they're a duplex or a single family, you know, for the future. To memorialize what's there. And so, in general, I think you need to put in the quote unquote lot areas. Lot, kind of those artificial lot boundaries around the two new existing mobile homes. And they should be numbered. And then somehow you need to show that where they're being relocated from are no longer allowed to be, you know, mobile home sites. So that someone doesn't go back and then put them there, you know, again. So somehow on the map, if you could show that for the proposed condition.
So in terms of the, of the lot lines, because not all of the units are placed exactly parallel for the existing.
Yeah.
Is it the board and the consultant's preference that we try and center the lot lines between the units as they're currently shown or?
They can be adjusted, but again, we're just drawing this to your attention because I don't know if they were drawn that way. And so, but you can adjust them before it says accessory structures or for other reasons. So just to try and follow that standard and kind of to take a look at where you, where you place them and adjust them if needed.
Okay, so we'll go through each separation between the two of them and see if we can get it as consistent throughout as possible. Again, it's, they're a little skewed, so it's not as easy as laying out parallel.
Totally understand.
If, just looking to the future, so if you adjust these and wiggle those lines based on the current, you know, angle of, of the units, in the future, you go replace that unit, you might want to straighten it out. Do we, do we, do we want to draw the lines essentially for how it should be in the future when, as these get replaced? Or should we draw them how they are currently?
Yeah, well, and, and the reality is, this is probably written, the zoning for new mobile home parks, right? So I think you want to just, it's, it's kind of a combination of both. You want to have the lines placed in a way that if someone does relocate, there's this area that's kind of assigned to them, you know, for their use. So I don't think the lot areas were just supposed to be kind of random. They were supposed to be areas that are assigned to each mobile home unit.
They're supposed to be areas to, assigned to each. There is some flexibility.
Right.
It talks about the equidistant if no other is shown. So in order to standardize it, you have the option of if you know the secondary access is on this side of the home and most the deck and the living area are on the other side of the home, the, the home does not need to be in the middle of the lot. And that may give you more flexibility as to the size of a deck and an access stair that that home may have. So if you want to move, I'm not suggesting that you do because it's a lot of work to figure all that out. But if you want to take a look at that, you can. Otherwise, these lots were actually outlined on the original approval and they are not required to be moved. The two that are being changed to the end of Andrea, is that?
Jean.
Jean.
Jean, yeah.
They do need lot lines associated with them and you need to figure out where the access points are because there are distant separations between homes for new lots as well as any extension from the home, which includes the access stairs and the decks and any shed that might be placed on the lot.
Right, and at some point, you're probably going to be limited by the fact that you're into the adjacent area too. So how much is going to be allowed? Maybe a DEC, function of DEC.
But I was glad that they were taken out of the flood plain.
Yeah.
So, so you're only asking for these lease lines essentially?
Yeah.
Yes.
On the two new ones, even though you're encouraging them to think through it for the whole.
Yes, yes, yes. So minor, but I think you have Fishkill Creek on the map, so just change out the Fallkill Creek. And I think it should just be confirmed or somewhere as a map note that these are single wides. You know, you probably can't fit double wides, but wherever you're moving things around, if they're intended to be singles.
There's doubles on there, aren't there?
Yeah. But I think it's depend, because you're showing two singles, we assume the relocated will be singles and then just have some map, map note.
For the proposed.
The relocated ones.
Yeah. And regarding parking, there was a general note that said parking areas were not striped and from a field inspection, there appears to be adequate parking space to meet or exceed the zoning requirements. And we just indicated we defer to the planning board whether someone needs to just go out on site to confirm that, maybe that has been confirmed. But I don't know if that's an, from the planning board's perspective, an accurate statement that they're laid out the parking, you know, sufficiently. So I don't know who would do that, but because it's a statement on the plan, you approve it, you're agreeing essentially that there's sufficient parking. And I just don't know if that's the case. And maybe Tad, you've been there and you can attest to that.
I think one of the notes was to show the parking space with each lot. So there's at least one with each lot. And, and I don't know if there's a common area. I think there is near the wetland on the other side and, and, okay, and down there.
And then up here as well.
Yeah, up there. They're not particularly close to the homes, but there is additional parking.
Okay, those were our comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sotero?
Well, good, amazing.
Ms. Pauladar?
I mean, nothing additional, just because this is a non-conforming mobile home park, we've discussed before, and I think we're really looking for compliance to the extent it's possible because some of these are laid out in such a way that.
We're shooting for less non-conforming.
Less, less non-conformity is the goal here.
Yes.
And for the ones that are being relocated, they do need to comply.
Right. Right, so the new ones.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense. Mr. Tuttle?
I have no additional comments.
Hey, Mr. Waters?
Everything's been covered.
Ms. Wasser?
Agreed.
Okay. Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Lee?
No comments.
Mr. Garcia?
No comments.
I would just say that thank you, that this is really a monumental undertaking to, to do this and I, I thank the new owners. But all the work that, that's being done to, again, incrementally make it less non-conforming. It's a lot of work.
Yes, yeah, sure.
So I just want to thank everybody because.
Yeah, it's been a bit of an effort. Is it possible to move forward to schedule a hearing at this point? There'd be hearings, it appears that there's hearings necessary for both actions?
So let's see.
And being that we're not really.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading.
Proposing very much in the way of new material.
So I have on my notes here, this is not ready to consider setting a public hearing, but.
I think you wanted responses to some of these comment, to the two comment letters that went out, but it's up to the board.
Right, generally, you would write up all those responses.
Okay.
But again, we're only talking.
Is there anything, I don't, is there anything like major?
I don't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear you cite anything major when you, when you reviewed.
No.
So the one thing I can think of that's going to have some time is pursuing a wetland permit. But if ultimately that's going to be a condition.
Right.
Of any approval, you know, the only risk you run is that it may move or maybe you're allowed one, but then you just come back.
Yeah.
So otherwise, I think a lot of, from our perspective, were cleanup items and I don't think there's an issue.
I mean, we might as well start getting some input from anyone.
Yeah, sure. We might be able to figure out what color to do the flower beds.
Yeah, the boxes.
I'm, I'm totally in favor of, of setting a, setting a public hearing. And that would be for both, right? The lot merger and the, and the site plan.
Yeah, I believe it's required for both.
Yep.
The map that's on the screen is different from the one that's on my desk.
Ah, yeah, we started making some of your updates.
So I think we would want to send the current.
We're not sending anything.
Oh, we're not sending anything?
We're just setting a hearing.
Okay. Ah.
The 19th.
So, yeah, let's find a date that works. Let's see, so.
December 3rd.
Yeah. So is there anything outstanding that needs to go out and come back?
I mean, we, we classified it as type two back in August. So we could send it to the fire department if you wanted to get comments from them. I mean, DCWWA has already, I mean, they, normally we would send it to the Department of Health, but.
They're heavily involved at this point.
So.
They know all about this project.
So actually, one of our questions was, we were a little uncertain, but the lot merger is definitely type two. Did we say that the, okay, just want to make sure because then there was also reference to Seeker, that we'd gotten something from Department of Health that suggested something had been circulated, so I wasn't sure.
Did, I, I don't know what we got, but.
You likely received correspondence from the Department of Health because of the water treatment plan.
That was it, okay.
Yeah, and also we are in the process of also addressing some septic issues with the Department of Health in an effort to continue to improve the facility.
So does December 3rd work?
Pardon?
December 3rd work for a public hearing?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, then can I get a motion to set a public hearing for the Havlin Mobile Home Park Lot Merger and Site Plan for December 3rd?
Second.
All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your help.
And Cynthia, you'll take care of sending whatever we have off to the fire department?
We didn't have to address all that.
Do I need a motion?
I mean, we can, if that's something you think would be helpful to your review of the site plan.
I believe.
Since they've already changed it.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering because what we have is now old.
Okay, so we can wait.
Yeah.
But if you're setting a hearing, then.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I don't, it feels like it's a little off.
Yeah, we can make a motion to have Cynthia send it as soon as the updated plans are received.
I would entertain that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Well, who said she can't make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dylan will make it.
There we go.
So Dylan's making the motion?
Yep, and Chris seconded it to send, send the fire.
That was even too fast for me.
I know. So when you submit the updated plans, we will send them over to the fire department.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Be safe out there.
Victoria's trying to take.
All right, next item on the agenda is Bellfield. Come on down. We're talking about Phase Two, Lot Eight. And the Sterling properties.
Wow, where?
Wow, where are you?
Oh! Honest to God.
So you want to wrestle? Or brought the army?
I think that's nicer than what I said. I don't think they heard that, so we're good. It's like food.
We thought, we thought we were just circulating for lead agency and getting out of here.
Yeah. Whoa. Put back in the hallway. I'm teed. I'm teed.
This is going to be fairly, fairly quick, right?
Yes.
It's a tough week when you change, change the time.
I know.
I am a little tired.
Okay. All right, welcome, welcome back. Thank you for coming out. I know it's been a, it's a drive for a lot of you, so thank you for coming out tonight.
Happy to be here.
Excellent.
All set, all right, thank you. Thank you, good evening, everybody. Larry Boudreau with, with Bellfield and of course, the Sterling team, there's Nick and Michael. So I'm going to go through some of the dates. It's helpful for me to organize everything, you know, catch the board up on things that we have done. Then I'm going to turn it over to Nick and Michael and then come back to me, answer any questions, and then I'm going to have Jennifer wrap it up. We, we've been making a lot of progress. We submitted, of course, on the 21st for this meeting tonight. And in between that, we've, we've looked to, we had another offline meeting on the 28th, which was a week ago, Tuesday. Very helpful, was more focused on the civil side, drainage, utilities, SWIP concerns, wanted to make sure Pete and Tad were on board with, with, with Pastoral's approach. We, um, we then, on that Friday, so that was Tuesday and Friday, October 30th, we submitted a variance request to the town board to be heard at their November 10th meeting, which is, which is Monday. I couldn't remember, Cynthia, if I sent you that submittal, so I sent it to you today.
Yep, they've had it.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
On, earlier this week, we met with the fire chief, you know, via Zoom and we went through the whole project with him. He did want to have a follow-up meeting with, with Michael and Nick, so we're scheduling that for either tomorrow or, or Friday.
Which fire department?
Roosevelt. So Dan Nichols and Ray. We're in receipt of Bonnie's comments. We reviewed them, just a couple of notes here. So she was asking about the fire district, following up with that, so we addressed that. One thing too that you followed up on, we, these current plans have updated topo.
Okay.
So that topo is current. We just got it about a month ago. So that has all the, the dirt that we moved from doing Phase Two A, all those mounds and stuff, all that's on, on the topo.
Was, was it the reference map maybe was an old date? Because it said 2017, so maybe just need to be updated, okay?
Need to be referenced, no, that needs to be updated.
Okay.
We're in receipt of the resolutions. I had Jennifer review it and I just want to pull that just real quick for, for tonight. And the referral is going to go to Dutchess County Department of Planning under Section 239M under general municipal law, so we get that. And then you're also going to submit it to Dutchess County Waste War Authority. We have been in touch with DOH last Thursday, so we had a meeting with them. They know what's going on, they're expecting a submittal. We told them, Chris told them the approach for the, for the water and sewer. The thing here to note is doing the coordination with the water authority. Give those guys a heads up.
No, Dutchess.
Anytime, was that? We did, okay, okay, good, good. The, the, we, we've been talking about the opening or requesting opening a public hearing at the next planning board meeting for 11/19 to, because we, we're going to get back the, the information sent to the town board on the height and the variation, so we'll, the public needing to deal with that. And Jennifer can follow up on any of the details on that. On, on November 10th, of course, with the town board, referral will be coming. We're going to also, they're going to also schedule a public hearing at their December 8th meeting to continue to move with the anticipation that this board will make a ref-. to continue to move with the anticipation that this board will make a referral to them in time for that December 8th meeting. November 19th, the next time we meet here, we'll have additional information. We continue to work, we received Bonnie's comments, we'll address these comments and we'll, you know, update the board on those comments. We're also going to provide more information along Main Street, landscaping, some of the finer details of the project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick and Michael and they shared with us their presentation. It's fabulous, they do a great job with this. And I told them tonight, I said, "You present a lot, don't you?" And he just does a great job, so I'm looking forward to hearing them tonight. So with that.
Thank you, Larry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I apologize for wearing a light blue shirt underneath my shirt, underneath my jacket, rather. So we met about two weeks ago, had some great dialogue here, got some feedback from the board. We've incorporated a lot of those comments into the design of this building, which Michael will walk us through. So we have new renderings to show the board this evening. In addition, we've pushed our interior design team to the point of having a floor plan schematic done, which we think looks absolutely terrific. In addition to just the floor plans, we have interior renderings done of what the common areas of this building will look like. I think you'll be unbelievably impressed. When I saw the imagery, I was super excited. So I think it speaks to the quality of the building that we're going to be constructing here. And, and that's about all, you know, so I'll turn it over to Michael, he can walk us through the presentation and, you know, we'd love some feedback.
Thank you, Nick. So tonight, as Nick alluded to, we are going to be showing new renderings. We are going to be sharing with you the overall elevations of the building and I'm going to be elaborating on the plans. Many of things have been just improved based on our conversations last time. There have been no major modifications to the overall plans in many ways. Essentially taking what the board had given us as suggestions and embedding it into the elevations, into the facades and into the overall plans that you'll see some of those modifications. We'll also be talking about materials tonight. We have a materials, a digital materials board with some theme imagery on it that gives you a better indication of what the materials that we're presenting are going to look like, but also I can elaborate on what they actually are, you know, and what we're proposing. One of the things that we'll dive into as well is a comparison between where we were before, what renderings we had before, so I have the previous renderings, and then where we are tonight with some of those things. Really kind of laying out where we have come over the last now two weeks and where we hope to kind of finalize these plans and these elevations as we quickly move to the next meeting. So without further ado, I'll kind of go into the presentation. Some of these slides I'll go through pretty quickly because we've already seen them and I'll just highlight them. So before, we talked about kind of overall Hyde Park, what this community was and what we were thinking for the vision of the residences at Bellfield. We also talked about who we thought was going to be part of this new community in this new neighborhood. That included single professionals, it included academic professionals that might live and work in the area. It also included empty nesters and retirees and then last but not least, the graduate student. And we talked about, more about why they were going to be here and what that community makeup really meant to us. So that leads us to the overall plan that we have here. And this looks very similar to what I presented last time, but there is extra detailing that we've added. And one of the things that we've done is we've worked with our landscape architect to enhance the areas where we had just shown kind of schematically the pool and those kinds of things. Now we actually have full ideas of where that pool is located, what the amenities on those amenity decks are going to be, where the private terraces are going to be for the units, but also looked at the streetscape, really what that streetscape wants to be with where the tree locations are, how wide the sidewalks are going to be, all in line with the things that we discussed back and forth at the original meeting, but meet the design intent of your design guidelines and the urban planning strategies that we hope to employ on the site. So one of the things that Nick alluded to is that we've been working with our interior designer very closely to look at what these spaces become. Where are open-to-above spaces, where are two-story elements in the plan? So one of the things that we did, and this is a little bit, and I don't have a keyboard, so give me one second. So we can all see. Because that is a little bit. I'm just going to show you here. So you can see that now, we're just not showing lines, kind of saying where this may be and where this could be. Now we're actually embedding that into the plan. And we're showing that this is going to be a grand entry into the lobby space, which we do have some images of what that space is going to look like in the next few minutes, plus where the mail and the packages, where the co-working area is, where the leasing area is, and how that all really works into this whole idea of when you come into that lobby space, you're wanting to be greeted at home. You know, that is your front door in many ways to the overall community. You can also see down here, this kind of speakeasy game room kind of feel that we have on that corner, activating that entry gateway that we talked about so much at the last hearing, but really showing that this is going to be an activated corner with some larger windows that open into this amenity space with the lobby and some other facilities in back, including a sports simulator. So we looked at the vibe board before and this kind of sets the stage for the next few images that we have. Because we looked and saw that we wanted to have a really robust feeling as you entered into these environments. It, one goes and takes from the architecture that's on the outside of the building and brings that in. We want to use really great woods, really great flooring areas, a lot of light coming into these spaces. And our interior designer has done a fantastic job to allow us to look and see what that entry lobby really wants to become. Now, some of the finishes, like the floor tile, we might change a little bit as we're going, but these are concept images of the idea that we want to share with you of the level of design that we're bringing to each one of the spaces as you enter in. So this is where you would have your concierge, you would enter into this grand lobby space that is vaulted in the top. It would have beautiful lighting elements that would come into that space and really having that woodwork that really is shown throughout the space and integrated in a way that doesn't say old and stuffy, but really does say that it's rooted in traditional, but is modern and from, you know, this era. So that young and old want to be part of this community. And you can see now, this is looking the opposite way. This is still in progress, as you can imagine, but this gives you an essence of the space that we're trying to create. When you look this way, that's that arched window that greets you in that main drop-off space and that is brought inside the building and through that arched kind of two-story space on the inside as well, which we thought was a really great way of linking inside and outside to the building. So as we go up into these higher areas, and I'm going to do the same thing that I did before, so I'm going to go like this and I'm going to go in a little bit. You can see that we've elaborated on the landscaping and really starting to understand on where the pool goes, where the fire pits are located, where the lounge areas are located, and also what we're doing on the inside amenity. So where that fitness center is, where the yoga room is, where the fitness-on-demand room is for individual fitness, but also, you know, embedding some of these spa areas, wellness areas, those things that are really important to the amenities. The other item that we did was, we have looked and seen that this makes the most sense for our main club room. So that is where you can have small events within the community. If you're a resident, it's a lounge space, it has a big TV, it has a bar, all of those different things that you could have a 50th birthday party at or you could have, you know, your son or daughter's birthday party or a small Christmas event or something like that, that if you're a resident of this community, you can rent out that space. The other thing is, is that there are going to be community events in that space, whether they bring in a chef from the Culinary Institute to do a wine tasting and a dinner. You know, those are different things that get all of the people that are part of the community out of their residences and involved in what's happening around them. The other thing is, is that there could be other community events that happen outside along the streetscape that draws people out in that way as well. So all of that kind of goes really nicely into the overall amenity package, but also the vibe that we're kind of creating in this new building. This over here is then our secondary amenity deck. And that is meant to be slightly more passive oriented. That's not where we have our pool deck, it may not be where we have our grills, it may not be where we have our outdoor kitchens, but it is more used for lounging, more passive areas that you can really use for, you know, sitting outside or reading a book, sitting on the green space, really it's almost like your backyard. And that's what we kind of envisioned that. And that looks out towards the trees and towards the back of the site. That really does become that backyard kind of feeling for a lot of these areas. As we go further along, you can see, these were the same theme images that we showed the last time about what happens on those amenity decks. And the building in this area has really remained the same, except as we get to the top floor. And on the top floor, what we've done is the step back that we created over here, which was for that amenity and that amenity deck, we actually then stepped back on this side as well. Instead of doing an amenity there, we actually have a residential unit there. So that, on the lower levels, is a three-bedroom, on that top floor is going to be a two-bedroom, but it has a beautiful outdoor private terrace. It does break down the massing, I think, very successfully and I appreciate the board giving us those kinds of ideas and we've integrated it into the plans that you saw in the submission package. And then this is an actual rendering of the space that is that amenity space on that top floor, that speakeasy space that we saw. So really highlighting that corner glass, having that opening to that outdoor step back that we have there, really making this space a beautiful space to have a glass of wine at night, see the sunset happen towards the west. It really becomes an elegant solution to breaking down the massing and providing that amenity space at the top of the building. So that leads us into materials. So one of the things that was requested of us was to try to understand what materials we're actually proposing here. And we'll go into the elevations and I can talk about more about where these things are located on the plans. But in the submission package, we did go and call out where these specific materials were going to be, the different colors that we're proposing all throughout that submission package. Here you can see, we are proposing macery stone veneer. We have taken and re-rendered that to be more in line with the stone that you see at Marist University, which I think is a very elegant solution and really beautiful. You can see that we are providing for a fiber cement panel that is a wood look, that's very economical and stands the test of time maintenance-wise and we think that that works really quite nicely with the overall aesthetic. Now, there are several different colors that we can select from. So this is slightly orangey. What we've done in the renderings is that we've toned that a little bit further down and we can play and continue to play with that a little bit more as we come to a final conclusion on this. You can also see that we are providing for fiber cement lap siding and we're proposing two different colors of that and we are providing for fiber cement board and battin'. And you can see that we've toned that down a little bit and we've taken the dark areas and we've removed a lot of them. So on the bay windows that you'll see in a moment, we've transitioned those to a wood look instead of a darker panel, as we had discussed before, and we've toned down some of those colors, as you'll see in a few moments. We also have the standing seam metal roof, the metal panel just on that, the area where we have the amenity at the center of the courtyard, as well as we have the hard-coated stucco being used in certain areas that make sense and really are complementary to the stone that we have in other locations. And you can see, I've just put some example images of what those materials look like on other buildings. So that leads us into the overall elevations. So, and we'll go back and forth with this a little bit, but you can see how we've broken down the scale with a lot of different elements on the building. But it's still, one of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to simplify and we heard that from you the last time, was that maybe there was one too many bay windows, maybe it was slightly too dark in some ways. And we went back and we looked and saw that, yes, we could go and make a wood look panel for this bay window on the side. And that became a really nice accent that we thought worked and harmonized with the overall aesthetic that we were looking for. One of the other things is that we did some additional wood paneling in some of these areas, breaking down some of the facades a little bit further. You can see that we did remove most of the areas where we had the darker bay windows and we've kind of been very suggestive in where we're putting them and selective in where we're putting them. You can see on this side, this is where we have that new step back located on the top floor, really breaking down this massing in the same way that we've done it on the opposite side here. Again, you can see that this is the location of that kind of jewel box and we really expect that to have a metal paneling that's really beautiful and stands out along that cottage or carriage way, as well as then where we're proposing stone and where we're proposing hard-coated stucco. So that also leads us then into the facades that are wrapping around the rest of the building. So you can see here, the same type of architecture that we're using on the front of the building, we're using in the back areas as well, but we're breaking it down in a slightly different way that's more residential. So you can see that we're using the pitched roofs in areas that break down the scale of the building and add these vertical elements in that become the balconies for many of the units. So that actually plays in moving back and forth so that the elevations that we have back here don't feel like they're just monumental. When you see them on a page and they just keep on going, there is going to be a lot of movement back and forth, as well as I want to remind you that you have one large courtyard here as well that breaks it almost into an A and a B on either side. So the same materials are used on the back of the site, on the back of the building, which really is a front to the people that live in the back of here. But also, one of the things that I wanted to mention is that the grade of the back area is almost flat and flush with the floor line of that second floor. So you're not, we're entirely covering and hiding the parking deck that's below it, on the ground floor. So this building on the backside reads one story less than on the front side, which we think is a really great benefit of how we're using the grading in the site. We're going to go to the next areas here. And these are the north and south sides of the building. And you can see that the grade does step in certain areas where we're hitting a retaining wall and then allows for our surface parking to be located there, but it also allows for these areas to be where we have our service to the building. The entrance in and out of the parking deck, but also all the utilities, the storage areas. All of those things are pushed to the north and the south because that's the most appropriate place for them on the site. We did not want to put them on the new right-of-way that we're creating that really great downtown feel along. You can see we have our secondary entry here on the one side that enters into that secondary lobby at that gateway. lobby at that gateway element and the amenity space inside as well. And the same thing is seen on this side, using the same kind of materials, transitioning in the same way, having a less of an entry here because we don't have an amenity or lobby space, we just have essentially an entry vestibule on this side. So we decided that we did not necessarily want to call that out so expressively as we did on the opposite side, but there is still an entry located here, as well as the garage entry located here for this side of the garage. And the last set of elevations that were in part of the package that we submitted was showing you a typical section through the building and showing you what the courtyard elements, courtyard facades typically look like. We didn't take one everywhere, but these are the typical ones on how we're still transitioning the same materials, the same level of design through those courtyard areas, because they can be well seen from the street as well. So that leads us to the comparison. This is what you've seen already. This was the design in October, two and a half weeks ago. And you can see that we had some of these elements that we talked about extensively at that meeting. When I flip to the next one, you can see here that we've refined some of the top of the building, really kind of looking at some of the gables, making sure that we're not too tall in certain elements of the building, looking and seeing how we're adding in the wood at the corners and the bay windows, and really lightening up some of the materials, including some of the stonework that we have at the base of the building.
Can you do that back and forth a couple more times here?
So you can see some of these areas, we've broken down the scaling a little bit and added a slightly different color here, which I think breaks down that bay pretty successfully.
Better.
And then adding these tones of wood in different areas starts to kind of give an accent, which we thought was good. Now, again, we can work with that wood tone a little bit and look and see what we have in that, because I think it's a little too orangey still, but we can work with that, and there's several different materials that we've looked at. We've also changed some of the roof lines a little bit to give it a little bit of back and forth, all breaking down that massing. These are all ways that we employ as architects to really break down those massing areas and make the building feel more human. That's really what we were hearing from all of you. So this was the design in October of the corner gateway element, and this is the design now. So you can see that what we did here was we refined some of the stonework, made that more elegant in many ways, and we had the area here where we've looked and made sure that this is the wood tone that comes through as an accent. So you can see here and here, we have flattened some of those slightly taller pitched roofs to make sure that we're in conformance with the code and with the overall building type, and really making sure that we have done that in a way that still lends itself to all the architectural elements that we had presented earlier. And then here, this was the October design, and I will then flip to this one, and you can see that really nothing much has changed, especially to the areas where we had the stoops and the entries to the residences. The only things that really have changed here is this material at the top that we just talked about in the other rendering, as well as refining this stone to be a little bit more elegant. You can see when we go back and forth, you can see then the bay windows, again, a little too orangey, we'll figure that out. And that really leads us then to me saying thank you, especially for all the input that you had. I hope that you see how we really took what you had said to us and really took it to heart, really making sure that we've added to the building and improved the building in many ways, and I think your suggestions did that in many ways as well. So there's a few things in the planners' report that I think is just cleanup items that we can kind of go through at some point, whether we need to go through them right now or after, we're perfectly fine doing either one.
Were there any that stuck out to you that you would like to kind of walk through? Or were most of them fairly common, you know, cleanup items?
So I think 30 and 31 are just cleanup items and items that we have to just give you a few more dimensions for. 32, I think, goes on the civil drawings, so it's just details for some of those fire signs and fire areas, which we've already talked to the civil engineer about. 433, I do have a response to that. So the renderings do show larger windows into some of those residential units that are located at the ground floor. We like that because we want a lot of light and air into those spaces, but one of the things that we're doing is we're actually lifting those residences up about two feet. And what that does is that even though we're coming down to about four to six inches from the floor, that means that that sill is about 36 inches from grid. So that is an appropriate amount of buffer for when you have people walking by and everything like that. We think that that's very appropriate. The other thing that I would say is that there's a large buffer in front of those areas, so the sidewalk doesn't come right to the edge of those units. There's going to be a lot of landscaping located right in front of it. So we think that that's appropriate, we wanted to maximize the glazing there, and the other thing is, there will be blinds. People will be putting up blinds and having those kinds of options in the inside of the residential units. So we thought that that was appropriate, we're more than willing to talk to you more about it.
No, I think it was just, I mean, I think the building and the improvements speak to what the planning board's been looking for. I just had a reaction, I was going through the renderings and wanted to get a sense of what your experience has been in the design, is the, you know, that ground floor with those residences, again, a lot of opacity, you know, the windows, but people being people and wanting privacy, they're going to put things in those windows, whether they're drapes, whether they're blinds. So the question was more, yes, it was privacy, but it was also from your perspective and aesthetic, you know, if someone puts up blinds and someone puts up, you know, drapes and then someone does something else, will it affect your aesthetic? You know, are you okay with it? So I just wanted to raise that for you.
When we construct these units, we finish it to the point of installing roller shades that are uniform across the entire building. So it'll look nice, it'll match, so that'll be part of the program.
Okay. So that adds that level of privacy when wanted, but also when you want really great light into your space, you get to have that as well. So I think that's a great level of elegance that Sterling brings to their projects, that allows for the architecture to not be inhibited by just human activity.
Right. I think I didn't want to see where you spent all this time and the aesthetics, and then you get this mishmash later on.
Hundred percent.
So, yeah, thank you for that.
We totally agree, and thank you for that comment to make sure that we were addressing that. Number 34, the landscaping plan, we will look and see how we can include a few different types. That was part of the landscape submission, that was part of the civil drawing, so we'll talk to our landscape architect and see how we can accommodate that. The materials, including colors, I think I addressed some of that tonight. We can talk more in detail if you need more, or if we need to add anything additional to that.
Yeah, I mean, I took this as you're working through this, you submitted a tremendous amount of detail and civil and architectural data, and that as you continue to advance it, you'll further refine the lighting and further refine landscaping, et cetera. So I just, at this point, wanted to give you some thoughts as far as some additional information that's needed.
And that makes total sense. And, you know, I think we understand the process and are more than willing to keep on advancing those different items. And then 36 was, I think, the last one that was related to the architectural plans, and of course, we will label the elevator locations, we can do that easily, and we can put a small label on where we imagine the fire access, which I believe is probably going to be discussed tomorrow or Friday as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
There you go, right?
Yep.
Thank you very much for that. Larry, did you want to?
A couple of notes. The southern courtyard where the pool deck is faces west, so, and then the way Michael opened it up maximized the amount of sunlight coming in. We did speak to the fire chief yesterday, he did want man doors, so you'll get that tomorrow or Friday.
Yeah, we don't see an issue with adding, I think, a man door next to the garage entry on the one side and doing the same on the other. So adding a man door in that location, we did not see an issue with.
In the event they needed access to the parking garage from the west side of the building, there needs to be clear access for. And with that, I'd like to hear your comments, and then after the comments, we'll wrap it up, and I'd like Jennifer to run through her comments.
Thank you very much. That's an impressive amount of work in a very short period of time, we really appreciate it. Sometimes we speak up here and not sure if anybody's actually listening, so thank you for all the effort for that. But I'm going to start with the consultants. Ted?
No comment.
Okay.
Your mind?
Yeah.
No comment.
Hey, Victoria?
Nope.
All right, so I'm going to start to my right and go to John, Mr. Garcia?
I have no comments.
No? Okay. Miss Lee?
No comments, thank you for your revisions.
Mr. Holberg?
Great work, I love the revisions, just excited to move this forward and see some work going on at the site, very excited, and I think this is going to be monumental for the rest of the site to build out, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
Oh, yeah, knocked around. Thanks. Thank you for, you know, listening and hearing. I especially like the attention to programming that you've shown, how you've created the amenities and how you've laid them out, the notches in the building. I like the wood on the bay windows, but I agree, it's not the right color yet, but...
I agree with you.
I think, you know, you've done a great job. I kind of miss a little bit of the height of the peak. I mean, you have to, you got to adhere to the zoning code, but I have to say, it did look a little flat. But thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Can I add some notes?
Please. Of course. Don't we all?
And excuse them because they're not, you know, I did them while I was in the truck. Let's see. Architectural, the architectural section. For the structure, I like the contemporary feel, it works. You know, for this particular building, the scale of it and all, very nice. You know, at first I was saying, how is it historic Hyde Park? But there are elements in here that you're utilizing and taking advantage of, and I appreciate that. You know, I do wish that you would consider, but this is something, because when you, I guess the original, you know, the design team that originally did it, you had the metal on the boxes, the attached boxes on the structure.
The bay windows.
The bay windows.
Yes.
Yeah. Those, I liked it in the metal, but I think it's more the color that was maybe doing it. Like, if that was, you know, a burnt umber or something like that, you know, a darker or bronze color, maybe with the wood tone, maybe not as dark, but it helped stand out. And these, you know, the wood, my concern with the wood was, it wasn't the sugibon, you know, the actual wood, it's not actually wood.
It will not be wood.
No. Okay, yeah, no. But that's the image I had when somebody said wood. This is, you know, it's a composite, so that was that. So...
But a lot of the composites are very, they look very similar. I would also say that it's not right at the streetscape, so these bay windows are a little bit further away.
Yeah, no, no.
You still get that essence of...
Yeah.
And Rob, I just want to say that when you're talking about the dark, the burnt, what color is it?
It's like a burnt umber, I think.
So, but it's because it plays off the saki, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It takes that kind of...
It's a bronzy, more bronzier brown than an orange brown, but...
Understood.
And, you know, the original stone, I didn't take a front to that on the, on those, you know, the delicate, you don't want it, when you're doing the stone, as you guys know, it's very costly to do it. But, so you'd want that to be a feature to stand out, you don't want it to just fade away. So you don't want it to blend in with the rest of the structure. That would be my only criticism to what was shown versus the original. I like that original, that original corner piece with the upper balcony, that was spot on, that was nice, that looked beautiful, you know, that was really nice.
I think I can understand where you were talking about here.
Yeah.
And where we went here.
Yeah.
Because I think you don't see the detailing here as much.
Of the stone.
And I think in real life, it's almost going to be in between.
Yeah.
This is a little bit too, it's me playing with the rendering, trying to get it to be as elegant and portray what we want to as much as possible, but I agree with you, I think it's almost in between. And until we pick actually what that stone is going to be, this is essentially a visualization of what it could be.
Yeah.
It's going to be some, you know...
And if you go over to, you know, the FDR site, you'll see that stone, you know, that darker, the little bit darker stone, and if you go to Marist, you know, the Marist buildings...
Yes.
It's a little gray.
It's a little bit more of the first rendering than the second, and that's all.
And we totally understand that, and I think I'm in agreement with you.
And then I think that what that does is it helps blend the whole area. It's uniting everything into one focal point. So that would be that. Now, as for the wood, this is the first time I'm saying it, you know, when I saw on the call out sheet that it was wood, to me, on the drawing I was looking at, it was a little orange, so that's why I had said that. But if it's wood, it's wood, you know, trusting your vision too.
Thank you.
You know, and I wanted to compliment you on that. There's nothing here that's negative, it's just a lot, because the architectural section is 10 pages. So I'll try to speed it up, but let me see.
Thank you.
Let's see.
I enjoy hearing you say that.
Sheet A-04, the east-south section, opposite the amenity structure at the pool, that's the section I'm looking at. The plan view, does that section, in the plan, in the plan view of that, does that, I'm just calling this out to your attention, does that need an egress in that? I mean, the distance from one stairwell to the other stairwell seems...
A-04, the building plan on the top floor?
Yeah, yeah. Well, on the, because I'm sure it's a tower, right? Is that how you're doing it? It's a stair tower, stairwell, tower with the elevator going all four floors, right?
Yeah, so what was the...
My question is, on that back section of that, on the east side of that plan, is that distance correct?
It is.
Okay. That's all.
So what...
It looked like a large corridor, and I think you take the midpoint of both.
I don't disagree with you. We checked all those numbers, and we have the sufficient amount of distance from one egress to the other. Also, this building, as we showed a diagram last time, is going to be split up into three separate buildings that were allowed to do horizontal discharges from one to the other. That actually provides additional protection, because there's doors that are hold opens that in an emergency will close, and essentially separate one building from the other, but still allow for egress to occur to a safer location and then down through the building.
Okay. And then A-5, I was just talking about the circular roundabout there that's facing that, it's just as the, this.
Oh, the main roundabout.
The main roundabout at the angled building, the one that faces it.
Okay, what's the question?
The question was that that looks like it's just, it's just brick or whatever, you know. And it, you know, is it going to have some kind of a plantings, a flagpole, a fountain?
So we're actually, we had a call with our landscape architect earlier this week, and I think we are going to be looking at the streetscape in that area and looking how we can enhance it, but also making sure that we meet the fire services.
The fire could drive over it. Yeah, that's why I'm saying maybe do an... Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm saying maybe do an inner circle in that and, and do it that way. But it's just a suggestion.
Already, no, we're already thinking that, because we want that to look more like what we have here. Now, there might be an inner circle of stone that allows for a mounted curb, so that that fire engine or that larger truck can get over that. Um, and we're working on that to make sure that we minimize that as much as possible and have the maximum amount of planting that we can have there.
Okay.
So, we agree.
Okay. Then the, uh, the amenities building on, um, A, A dash O six, um, I had, uh, let's see, um-
This is the jewel box?
The jewel box, yeah. I, I had that, I was wondering if, that, you know, where you have the stucco, the hardened stucco?
Yes.
If, if that could be stone, because my, my thought on it, yeah, it's cost, but, uh, my thought on it is it would help anchor this big facade, you know, the, the whole, it's seven hundred and fifty feet long or something like that.
It is.
Right? Okay. So that would help, to me, would visually would help anchor that and would help use the stone. Because stone is a big part of this, the stone walls, everything we have.
It is, but one of the things that you wanna do is you don't wanna use the same material consistently along, 'cause then you almost make a plinth.
Right. You don't wanna waterline of it, yeah.
Correct. So what we were doing here was we were accenting and making sure that we were using the stone in the most highly visible areas and positioning to a different material that is consistent yet and compatible in those other areas where we push back.
Yeah, okay. So, so that's fine, you know, understanding that you're actually looking at that.
We are.
Because a lot of people do it for cost reasons and, and then it's, it's, we're not, this board is not supposed to look at cost. That's not something-
I understand, and that is all part of everything. We, we can't, I can't lie to you and say that it's not. But I can say that it works with the architectural language that we have created here. And it works with the urban massing. It works with how we're breaking down the scale of the building. And I think it's an appropriate solution in this location.
Okay. It, 'cause it's such a beautiful building that you don't wanna just, you know, that was my key. The other point I wanted to make is, you know, when you look at the front, I wanna make sure that you're paying the same attention to that kind of a detail on all the other three sides, even the back.
And hopefully you saw some of that tonight, but also in the submission drawings.
A little less, there's a little less stone on the backside even, but, but, you know, you have paths going back there. It is gonna be visible. It's supposed to be a walking community. And so, you know, you want it to be pleasing on all, all sides.
We do agree.
Okay. All right. Um, let's see, then the, uh, stone at the, oh, okay, um, let's see. I had the, that was the southwest, the northwest, stone at the courtyard and garage level, where again, you had the hard, um, in the south, in the northwest-
So in those locations-
Elevation.
On the one side, we are showing the stone at the base and then transitioning to the stucco above as a waterline. Um, I probably am going to do the same thing on the opposite side.
Thank you.
Just because it is going to get a little bit beat up at the, at the base and it needs a more significant material there. So doing a waterline of about eighteen inches at the base there and then transitioning to the hard-coated stucco above, like we have on the opposite side, I think works well.
And that, and that's where the, you know, the entries are, I believe, to the, you know, the garage. So that, that is gonna have high traffic and stuff, so the stone is more durable that way.
I totally agree, and I made a note in the plan.
A dash O seven, the south elevation, stone veneer, wanted to replace the two stucco. We've already discussed that a little bit. Um, this will help anchor the massive structure, like the use of the board. The wooden battan element, I believe, it's, it's, uh, it looks to me like it's a charcoal color, darker. I mean, from the rendering.
There's two. There's, there's a white one and then there's a darker one.
There's a darker one. The darker one is in, you know, and I, I might know the reason why you did it, but it's on the one, the other entry. I think there's another entry or something you're utilizing it?
You can actually see it here.
Yeah, yeah, it's all the way on the far, far end of that drawing. Um, that, that would be, it would be nice to incorporate that a little bit more throughout, because the, if you look at the elevations on the, uh, the rear, the south and the north side, it, they seem a little same, same value in colors and hues.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if you squint, you, you lose a little bit of that detail that you're, you're spending a lot of time to incorporate it. You know, let it show. That's, that's my opinion.
Or contrast.
Yeah, a little bit more contrast, yeah. So-
I can understand that. I think the main reason why we were using that in that one location is it is a secondary entry.
To key it, yes.
So we were kind of using that as a special moment-
Yeah.
And not necessarily wanting to use it in other locations. So that was kind of the design.
But just be aware then of the values, you know, next, a building next to, you know, another one. Because, you know, it, it's a shame to lose all the, um, the articulation and stuff that you have going on.
And you can see that we do-
Yeah.
Go and transition back and forth. We have essentially three different colors on the back, which I like the simplicity of that, where we have the vertical elements that are the wood tone. And then we have two essentially primary of a darker gray that, that doesn't have the, the gable on top of it. And then we have the white that has the gable, and sometimes double gables in certain areas, which we think worked well in the back.
Yeah, I think-
So it does offer that contrast and that back and forth to break down the massing.
Yeah, you know, uniting the elements without adding more architectural elements, less is more. I mean, I have it in my notes, so I, I understand it.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, it's just, if I don't say it and something goes awry, then I, I'll feel like I didn't do my job.
Understood.
Okay, uh, let's see. Oh, yeah, okay. So this talks about, um, eight, A O seven, the veneer, a little bit more so that the contrast to add, okay, interest and depth and the change in color value, uh, can be discussed further when we see the materials, which this is the first time I'm actually seeing the materials and not just looking on the, and the color palette. That's gonna be key, I think. And my question to you was with the colors, are, is this James Hardy product? Or is it, it is James Hardy?
It will be a similar product. I don't wanna say-
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't wanna say that the manufacturer, because that's a manufacturer, but it will be a fiber cement, cementitious panel.
Yeah, 'cause there's so many, there's so many now, but, you know, I know that James Hardy has, you know, their standard, but they also have a palette of like six hundred other colors you could do.
They do.
Yeah. So, so, you know, I, I didn't know if you were using custom color or the standard color or what you would be showing us when we see it.
So as part of the design, we are using their standard colors, 'cause we think that it works well with what we're, what we're accomplishing here. But the accent of the wood look tone, um, there are several products now on the market that work with a fiber cement panel that essentially coats that fiber cement panel to be that wood tone on the top of it. Um, there are also other panels that could be used, uh, that are in the market that, that would get you the same kind of look and feel.
Yep, yep, yep. I understand, okay. So is that, um-
Yeah.
I'm almost there. I'm almost there.
Are we?
Yeah.
That's a lot more.
No, 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 no. This is, this is easy. This is easy. I can read this now, 'cause it's not on chicken scratch.
I will.
The east elevation and, and stone to, yeah, the, the, your, um, cross-sections. You, you had a cross-section in there that had the sections of the building showing the cross-sections, and then there was blank space in the middle. Could you, if you do that, you know-
Are you talking about A O nine?
Uh, I think it's A O nine, yeah. Cross-section, yeah, the cross-section north to south should be handled the same as the one east to west. You know, showing the ghosting of the building, you know, through it. Just, it, it's just because it gets a little confusing seeing that empty space. Uh, that's just-
I'm coming back.
I had a, I had a, try to see where I was at with the building-
Understood.
In my head. Uh, the exterior facade and, and between, just between the sections there. Um, and, let's see, then I'll go to this here and then I'll be wrapping it up. Uh, okay, uh, certain locations together. Okay, just, yeah, in certain locations to make the building together more cohesive. Okay, maybe. Add, uh, a lot of this we talked about, so I'm just trying to weed it out, so I don't have to say it again. Not a, okay, and I'm not a proponent of not treating all the sides of the structure with the, with that, with the same level of detail, of finish and detail. We, we just discussed that, that you're, you're aware of it and, you know, it, some of it is cost-driven, I understand, uh, because there's old trails around. It'll be seen from everything, even though it's, it's, there's a big hill in the back. There are people that are, will see that back. Um, and then just to close, um, I see your vision. I am appreciative of the design concept and how much detail and, um, heart, you know, the, the work that was, uh, that is represented in the drawings. Uh, you should, your team should be commended.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. We really appreciate all of those comments and the suggestions from, from the last hearing as well.
Yeah, you have no idea. That's high praise. Thank you, Rob. That's, that was-
I'm sorry it took so long.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Tuttle?
All right. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate the, um, the changes. I think it's really positive. Um, did you, when you were going through this, you talked about two of the, um, the amenity, outdoor amenity spaces in detail. Did you talk about the north one?
So the third one is meant to be totally passive. And what we're expecting there is, is that the units on that level will actually have larger backyard terraces. Um, so that's something where-
So you might actually divvy that up kind of into a, into a backyard sort of-
Yes. So those are gonna be much larger kind of lawn areas for those units in that courtyard.
The one to the east.
What's that?
The one to the east, you mean?
The one to the east.
You said north.
No.
No.
On the north, on that one. It's facing west.
That's-
See, I thought they were in the back.
We're not divvying it up yet, but that is the idea.
That's, that's why it's unprogrammed at the moment.
Well, I, I think also that, uh, a lot of that green space that you're seeing there is going to be a green roof.
Right.
Um, which I think is so cool.
Yeah.
Um, you know-
Over the, over the deck, over the garage.
That's correct. Um-
So you would, like, the middle portion might be, you can't go there and the outside would be small yard.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Typically, we'll have a lawn area, and then you'll have a seated tray area that will be that, that green roof that will really allow for people to look down and see green and not look at, you know, white rooftop.
Might be nice, English garden type of thing, where it's segmented like that, you know.
We can talk to our landscape architect, 'cause he has several ideas.
Yes, yes, because pollinators are big, you know, pollination.
So funny that you said that. I think one of the ideas that's being, uh, kicked around right now is, uh, making that a pollinator garden and hiring an aviary, uh, and, you know, making, making Hyde Park honey and, and giving that out to residents as like a holiday gift or, or something along those lines. I, yeah, I, I love nature. I love the birds and the bees, and, um, that's, that's something that I think is so neat.
Yeah. No, that's excellent, excellent. Yep.
Um, I love the jewel box. I, I really think that, that breaks things up really nicely along that frontage. Um, I, you know, I expressed last time skepticism about the, the bay, uh, window elements. I appreciate what you've done with that. I think the ones at the corner are more natural look than the ones that were in the, in the middle. Um, I, just, just to put it out there, I'm, I'm curious what you think about, I always, they don't extend out too far. Um, but when you have those, those elements that are, that started a second story and go up, they can make things feel a little bit top-heavy sometimes. And I wonder, I guess I'm, what I'm asking, I'm asking you, why not extend them down to the base? Why not have that bay start at the ground? Why have it start at the second story?
So traditionally, um, bay windows have always been one-story.
Like a brownstone type.
Like a brownstone.
Yeah, okay.
And that's where you get that sense. And a lot of times, that then becomes an element on the facade rather than part of the facade.
Mm-hmm.
So when you extend it down, it really becomes part of the base of the building-
Yep.
And you don't see the area around it. So a lot of times, you know, that becomes an element on the facade rather than a delineation on the facade.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the architectural history of it.
Yeah.
But I would say, you know, some of the other reasonings are structural. So you can actually sit, especially when we have a podium building like this, you sit that bay window actually on the podium level, so that it structurally can, can be just sat on that. That's why it's a lot easier to sit that out the second floor of this building rather than in other floors, 'cause it structurally makes sense for that, for that piece.
Yep.
So there's different ways of looking at that.
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it at this point. I think, I think it's, it's, it's definitely nice to have something like that along, along there.
So you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So you're saying that the podium creates the ledge then for a structure?
That's exactly right.
Candeliber it out, yeah.
Yeah, it's a candeliber.
Yeah, and that allows for a much easier condition of a concrete extension. You know, a candeliber or concrete can go up to six, seven feet. Wood frame is more difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Um, I know, I know we're just looking at renderings. I, I kind of like the sort of lighter stone. I do, it looks more elegant to me on this.
Thank you.
Again, it's very tough to tell from a rendering how stone is actually-
It's one of the toughest. It's really actually harder than even brick, uh, to really get that good sense.
We've run into that a few times at different buildings on this property, you know, trying to, trying to really see what it's gonna look like. Um, you know, the, the wood, um, I, I think that's a great choice for those, and I'm looking forward to seeing where else you may want to integrate it. When I, you know, you said, um, earlier that you, the feedback you got last time was, was that it was sort of too dark. I would suggest that, I don't know if I said this as clearly as I could have, the words I was looking for were, it looked too sort of cold, almost. And that the, the wood there really helps with it, but I, I might suggest continuing to look for more opportunities to bring more warmth to the building. We're all working with whites and grays here quite a bit. Um, that's all I got. You guys have done a really nice job on this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We really appreciate your comments.
Thank you. So again, more, more feedback, all very positive. I have, to be honest, this is, um, this is very exciting. And the work that you're doing and the pace that you're going is, is just breathtaking. So thank you for all of this. All I can say is thank you, thank you, thank you. I think we're up to-
Up, up, up.
Jump in real quick.
Yeah, so we, uh, have, you know, we're receiving the comments. We're gonna continue to address them. You know, one thing the civil and landscape architect are working on is Carriage Way and the streetscape there. And, uh, we'll have something to get to this board next Tuesday.
And there's also lighting, right, for the, on the building, building element lighting?
Yes, yes. So all that'll be coordinated and we can get it to Cynthia and send it to you and then be able to present it at the next meeting on eleven nineteen. In addition, um, uh, Michael and his team will continue to address the comments and present, you know, follow-up on the nineteenth as well.
Yeah, I mean, all I'm hearing is, you know, it's boiling down to a decision of narrowing down the materials and the color.
Color.
Which is, uh, you know, that's a great spot to be in, yeah.
For, just a quick question.
Yes.
For the lighting, um, the, you've got, could you provide spec sheets for the fixtures? Um, are they, are they standard to what you've already done?
Yes, yeah, they match the hotel.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We've had some email communication today about a request that we'd like to make formally now, that this board open the public hearing at the next meeting on the nineteenth. Um, I think, uh, Sterling has done a great job in being very specific about materials, design, et cetera. And I think we'd like to, uh, begin public comment as soon as possible. Uh, I do acknowledge that the referral will go to the county. The county's entitled to, uh, it's lawful period of time to comment. But in the past, the board has opened public hearings and, and, uh, and felt free to keep them open as long as it was appropriate. So, uh, we'd like that process to begin, if you could include that in your action items tonight.
Well, we were, uh, looking to set a public hearing, just not for the nineteenth, so we've got that in there now. Yeah, we had, the choices were December third to the seventeenth. Yeah, we had, the choices were December 3rd to the 17th. Now we're gonna put November 19th.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, per, per your request. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay, so, um, we do have a resolution, I think, right? We have a resolution.
Yep.
We want to refer to County Department of Planning and Development.
I have this one.
And Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, the Department of Health and the Roosevelt Fire District. So they have these sets and can start to go through them.
Okay, that's me. Resolution to refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, the Bellfield amended final development plan, phase two, phase two B Sterling Apartments Site Plan Lot 8, resolution number 2025-54, whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby directs its secretary to refer the site plan set to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to the section 239- M of the General Municipal Law and to direct its secretary to send a courtesy referral of the site plan set to Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, Duchess County Department of Health and the Roosevelt Fire District.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Good. And may I please get a motion to set a public hearing for the Bellfield Sterling PUD Phase 2B FDP Lot 8 for November 19th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Am I missing anything? Thank you for coming out on this windy night and, um, please be safe in your travels. Uh, but thank you again for all, for all the hard work and.
Thank you very much.
This is really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
You wanna make a statement?
Say anything.
It's gonna be windy.
Good night. How do I turn this off? All right, we now have a, good night, good night, folks. Safe trip.
And before we leave our, these are our consultants, I just wanna remind everybody about the site walk on Friday.
Yes, thank you. We are planning a site walk at the Rent-A-Space Center, uh, site 11?
11.
11, thank you.
Where are you parked?
11 a.m. this Friday. Uh, probably right there.
Snake cards?
Is there a lot?
I might park in the private theater and walk across the.
I don't think there will be any snakes out, but you never know. Make a new friend, but yes, so all are welcome.
Oh, yeah, you can leave that in the kitchen.
Thank you for that, I was about to bug out.
I, I, I did not sign up for that. I didn't sign up for that. They, they can't.
They can regulate it by the temperature.
They're, they're sleeping, they're sleeping in their little snake dens.
No snakes, it'll be fine.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, consultant.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I don't remember setting the tape.
We're on to other business now. We have before us a resolution for a bambini medical signage. Uh, the first one is for a wall sign.
So I'm seeing it right.
And I believe John has this one.
Yes. Resolution recommendation for issuance of a sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A4D, bambini wall sign Benessari Family Health, uh, date November 5th, 2005, resolution 2025-57A, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for the Benessari Family Health as submitted by 4, submitted by 4232 Albany Post Road LLC on October 24, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Yep. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is another sign for the bambini site. Ms. Wasser.
Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A4D, bambini wall sign synergy functional medicine, resolution 2025-57B. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for synergy functional medicine as submitted by 4232 Albany Post Road LLC on October 24, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for Robert Sadriana. Mr. Tuttle?
Yep. Robert Sadriana, 14 Harvey Street, site plan waiver, uh, resolution 2025-56. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Robert Sadriana to install a bug darn oil tank on the rear of the existing single-family home located at 14 Harvey Street and whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit application and request for a waiver of site plan received on October 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.[1780.83]